All right. We'll get started at six o'clock. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong notes here. Six PM start of the Sunapee School District meeting Wednesday, December 18th, 2019, 6 PM, in the music room. Do roll call.
Please.
Kelly, you want to start the wave?
Sure.
Russell, the superintendent.
Jesse Tyler, school board.
Scott Raisman, school board.
Ed Anderson, school board.
Amy Nichols, school board.
Jody Bergen, Central Elementary School.
Sean Moynihan, principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Super duper. If you'd like to rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to their republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the discipline, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's take a quick agenda review. Take a quick peek, if you would, everybody. Do you have any additions that you want to?
For other business, I'd like to talk to the board about starting an ad hoc committee.
Okay. That sounds good. Anything else from anybody on the board, agenda works? All right, we'll get to ad hoc under number five, other business. We are, the main goal of this meeting is to, good evening, nice to see a few more folks here. The main goal, the main point of this meeting is the CIP subcommittee, of which Andy and I are the board members on that, like others to policy and negotiations and the like. We've done a lot of work on this project. I think everyone in the room is pretty well deeply involved or aware of that, so for the folks at home, the way this works is the subcommittees need to report back to the board. So we're not accepting, as a board, we're not voting on accepting this project or not. This is a chance for the board to be totally, fully informed, ask a bunch of questions. We can go as deep and granular as is beneficial for the other three board members who haven't been deeply involved in this. That's the point of tonight. So there is not a vote tonight. We're going to have the key meetings in January, which we can talk about at the end of the, but we just want to make sure you understand you're attending a discussion and a Q and A, so the board leaves this evening fully informed. That's it. That's the point of the meeting. So with that in mind, we are still going with the school board format, which we can have, let me just go through here, it's interview. All right, so, public forum, in the policy BD, BEDH, so three minutes and 15 minutes total. Does anybody in the public want to speak for up to three minutes? Please stand and speak in a nice loud voice. And a hush falls over the crowd, we're going to keep moving. I love that moment of silence. We've got another, at the end, we have two in our policy, which we'll proceed to. So, CIP reviews the building project proposal. So, just to kick us off, maybe we can chat on this. So, you have in front of you the most up-to-date PowerPoint. We have Vanwell, BW, here to support. Andy and I should be able to answer just about all of your questions. Instead of doing a formal walkthrough, we wanted to just put the spotlight on the three of you and open it up for questions. We've gone through, we've done updates at the school board meeting, so you know we've had four community forums, the initial one with the idea, plan forming, initial drafts and pricing, and then the refined pricing, which is this one. So I think the last forum, we had over 200 people. There's a lot of comments in the community, comments, questions, and interest in this. This is where we are at this point, leading us towards the key steps where we, as a board, will accept or decline this officially in January. So instead of battling on, I don't know, do you want to add anything, or just stare at them and look for questions?
No, I mean, I think that through months and months of hard work and refinement, this plan is really excellent. We, at the last forum, I think it was very well presented, there were some good questions. And I just look forward, I guess, to any of the other school members', you know, thoughts, inputs, questions, you know, the fields got resolved, you know, at the end, so that we had all, the fields were able to be relocated and the same amount of facilities and upgraded so that they would be able to be used all season, instead of, you know, a year, through the last, last go around with all the new, new updates. And we were able to draw, I don't know, I'm just going to, let's just drop right back to the cost paid. If you remember where we started, you know, we started this whole procedure with, with, you know, an auditorium option, and we decided to not move forward with that. The price tag was, you know, all the options were about 35 million. And through a lot of, you know, hard work and legwork to get the numbers down, now we've got this elementary school down to 17.5 million. And I think the layout of it is fantastic. And the middle high school is, you know, the renovations are needed here, you know, and infrastructure, we got that down to 3.655. And the field's dropped almost in half, from eight million to 4.3. And we were able to give the same amount of place space for that, and even a little bit more. We've got to track that on the new plan, so.
Yeah, the fields was the, has been, was the wild card up until the last minute, trying to figure that out, just available land. You know, there's, I talked to a realtor at the Christmas concert, and he has 10 people waiting to buy a house under $400,000, just lined up and waiting. And he's trying to buy land for his own family, and everyone's stuck in the same predicament we got too familiar with, so incredible amount of hard work to get to solving a solvable problem, and Andy led that charge.
It's just going to add, it really, I think it flows well with the town now, when you come down the hill into town, you've got Dewey Field on your left, you're going to have the sports com, I'm not going to call it complex, but the two new fields on your right, and then right down to Veterans Field. So it's really, it's really all in the same area when you come into town, which is nice.
Yeah, so we've got, we have some of the questions that we're hearing most often, so if you don't touch on some of those topics, I have prompts lined up for you to make sure that there's things you're considering or aware of, and can ask more questions. Just to give a quick, quick overview, it's all about land in Sunapee and the town, so an overview of the building, if we didn't cover this fully before, just to refresh, if you look at the floor plan, which we're very excited about, and it's nice that we're, to that point, we're going to bring it to you and really start talking about education and benefit to the, you know, to the students and to the community. Building on the soccer field, the only flat available land, we're able to take advantage of that, but it also limited the scope of what we could do. So one of the questions we get is, what about folding the SAU space into that? So we try, it's part of the solution, because it would be student parking, so they'd be off-site, away from, the new drivers would be away from the younger students, there's a lot of advantages to that. But the driver on the shape of the building and the layout was staying one story, which right now we have three, and elementary schools to one, or to one. There's not a lot of space on the site to do anything more than we're asking of it, and be able to have traffic flow, kids moving safely. So, like, you know, the playground for the little kids, kindergarten, first grade is in the back, so the only way to see the kids out at recess is to go by where there's cameras in the front, go down the side of the building, and go to the back. That also came with some really helpful parent feedback of having the littlest kids dropped off in the back. So there's a single entrance in the front, part of that's driven by the site constraints. Also, they're, all of the kids are going to come, they ride in multiple ages on buses already, have for years, they're going to flow through a secure entrance, the cameras and staff and the whole bit. The younger kids head to the left, the elementary school kids. And the middle school is now going to be in the mid, what's now the high school, that end of the building is going to become the middle school, so you kind of start your education journey on one side, and you go across the building through your 12 years. So, trying to just sort of give you the overview, and then see, do you have questions you want to start with? Give you some prompts, what worked for you?
I guess just a little bit more logistical, because I was not here last week to attend the community forum, has that stream been posted online? I went to look for it, it hadn't been when I first went, but I'd like to be able to go back and watch it and hear some of the feedback directly.
Sure. Yep.
It's on there now?
Yep. And the plans went up for the meeting, so some people were looking at it at times. But yes, the, the single entrance has been a big topic, but it also, we're used to a really, I'm going to choose my word carefully.
Chaotic.
I don't want to say dysfunctional, but I guess chaotic and dysfunctional drop-off now, so a lot of the project, I've certainly experienced, is people are used to something for so long that hasn't been proper, that even getting to something that's streamlined and efficient can be a big change. It's a lot of, lot of change, communication, so, yes, there's a single entrance, but what we've worked at, we've got help working at, where the youngest kids will be dropped off in the back of the building.
I hear from the younger parents all the time how excited they are about not worrying about their kids in the parking lot or going up the hill, you know, with this new drop-off in the back with the roundabout.
Yeah, you can't see it from the road, so you're coming down North Road, it's completely safe away from, and then we removed the young drivers, who've been seeming to do well, but now they're completely, they have the park at the SAU, new park, ground, the parking lot.
So that's, that's going to be expanded, or is that only test?
We own land, and the building's paid for, so replace it in this building was going to be significantly more than what the value of the building is.
It's going to cost more money to replace it than it was to.
And there's some advantages for special ed in particular that's based out of that building for Tara and her work in expanding programs, which we saw in the budget, it's having a huge impact, pulling the kids back. It's appropriate for a superintendent to have separate space for meeting with staff, meeting with concerned parents, so prior, you know, taxes had already paid for the building, it's all modernized, so to better use the land that we already own. We got some help coming up with a more creative solution to pull the younger drivers, because we're, we're using a lot of parking spaces with new building space, because all of the classrooms are going to have windows, and several of them are going to have access to the outside, so replacing those parking spaces, the newest drivers get to walk a little bit from the superintendent's area, and that was a nice challenge.
But it's just the parking is what I was meant, for the, for the students, like, do we have to, is it included in the plan, have to do some kind of parking lot expansion back there?
Yes, that's part of that.
Yes, it's on the site, yes.
It's on the site. It's not a hard site to work with, so it's not going to be that expensive, but it's making better use, instead of a big lawn, we're going to have kids parking there, and they'll be able to walk through on a trail in the back, or they can walk around in front of them. So, it worked out really nicely. We were so short on parking spaces, we weren't sure what was the best way to manage that. Other questions?
I've had a lot of people asking me, there's a bunch of questions in here, but I don't know if any thought was given to this. One that I hear quite frequently is there, by doing this addition and removing the elementary school, which we know is antiquated, heat loss, is there any way to know what the savings will be by shutting technically down that school and putting it into one area? Is there, anybody able to come up with any types of savings that we can tell the citizens about?
Well, they just take turns.
Does that also include less employees, more employees, or stuff like that?
There definitely will be some staff impact, but there'll definitely be a lot of efficiencies also, so we're hoping to have operational costs, you know, budget by January, that's what we're hoping for.
Yeah, so we talk on the, we have the big talk on the 15th, they're going to sit, we're going to, because we now got the plan, materials and stacks, we're going to say, okay, it's this much less than the old boat, but then the other factor is, it's uncomfortable to talk about, is Russell will, working with the staff is going to come with a proposal on what the staffing is, because it is a lot more efficient to have a K-12 campus, so where there are some duplicative jobs, then those have to be addressed.
Just bring it up, because I know what we're talking about, we could potentially add another janitor, but will that not be adding another person to savings? Because now we're in one area, one campus, those type of questions.
Yeah, so that's all for the 15th, so just fuel and all those other things, and associated costs, like some of the staff have talked about, up to six hours a week, not addressing little kids, go down to music, address them, send them backup, so things like that all go into a large equation, so we'll have, we'll have, have by then, the, beyond just the building specs, which are going to be exciting, the staffing and efficiency, how much of the time, how much more is the same staff at the same price going to be teaching, which is really exciting, taking away a lot of the waste. Again, we're all used to some kind of kludgy things, or, you know, but so to remove that waste and just have education, educating is going to be pretty exciting.
So while we're talking about cost, with the fields now being over conveniently placed in front of Mount Royal, is there, I know it won't be done for January, but is there opportunity, we know that they need, they have nothing, right, and they borrow space, is there opportunity to either, A, look at revenue generation, or maintenance agreements or something, so that they help with the maintenance costs of you being able to use some of the facilities? Is that a consideration?
Andy led the field, so.
Yeah, I can answer that. So as of right now, our fields will not be available after hours. There may be some, some talk about it would be available during their school day, so there might be some time that they could use it, but it would not, because we didn't add, if you remember when we first started the whole field subcommittee, we needed two soccer fields, we needed, you know, a baseball field and a practice field, and we whittled it all down to basically, what we have now, we're much more efficient and be able to use it more. And, and the coaches all agreed, the field committee agreed, this is what we're going to put forward, but there will be no extra time.
You know, I understood, but I mean, even just for like their PE classes.
Correct, so we are discussing that.
There's also with, with the advice from bond attorneys, you have to be careful with, when you have a public funded bond, with what you have, any kind of naming, or reimbursement or revenue flow, so we're going to get more into that.
Yeah.
But I guess to speak really plainly, the, we could definitely use more fields than we're going to have, so knowing our bizarrely high participation rates, we expect to exhaust the ones once they're done. They're going to have fresh surfaces, fresh sod, they won't have holes, like they want up here, drainage up here will get fixed, so we have to use them, it should eliminate the need for all the, like, well, the kids run up to the state finals where it's a ritual that families know about, that you go play somewhere else, because field is going to be usable, all of those things go away. We're going to, with respect to another school in our town, that's the least of our concerns or in our interests. It's a great question, but we anticipate using it so much that they won't, the time that they would most want to use it, there's going to be full of Sunapee people.
No, 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 fully understand, and it's really just about during the school day.
Yeah.
Really, because it becomes potentially an operating cost reduction in some way, if they support some of the maintenance costs, because they're using it for PE or whatever.
That's the ideal outcome, when we get there.
Exactly. We are discussing that.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I guess one of the feedbacks that I've heard from a number of the kids now, obviously the disappointment of having these fields offsite, is, you know, is there a consideration that there'll be some kind of shuttle service that can bring the fans on game days over to games? Just points raised that a lot of these kids come out of school, they hit the fields, they go watch and support their teams, some of them may not have the means by which to get that far downstream, is that something that we could think about?
Yeah.
Again, not, you know, immediately imminent, but just a consideration.
Yeah.
Sure, I absolutely think there's opportunity for that. We've already talked about getting the athletes there, right, and as we do right now, down to, down to Veterans Field, over to Newport's Track, over to our ski jumping, to the golf course, so we're, we're pretty accustomed to doing that. And I think if we had big games that were going on, if there were a group of kids, and Sean does this now, for some of our weekend tournament games, if kids want to go, we put a bus together, and we'll make those things available.
Don't forget, we don't have very many home games right now, so just keep that in mind, they're going to have, not going, it's a lot closer to home to watch home games, because usually our home games are at Colby, or Proctor, or, you know, Newport, yeah.
We can, you know, like the student parking lot at the SAU could be, if there's a big home game, we can have folks park there, have buses run them up, mitigate the traffic, like, yeah, that's a great question. What other, you're on the roll, what else are you hearing?
I'm just changing gears completely, I mean, you know, I'm looking at this as a non-educator and saying, yeah, it looks like a good plan. Do we have feedback from administration, education, of the educators to, as to how, what their thoughts are on having now a single K through 12 campus? Because there's pros and cons, I mean, and I can do all the research in the world and look at it myself, but at the end of the day, I'm not the one in a classroom teaching or coming to manage one big campus.
Right. You want to start?
Sure. So we've had lots of great educational discussion, starting back in August of last year, or June of last year, talking not only about the design, but now looking really at the one campus. And faculty's been great about sharing concerns. We've heard a lot about identity, and what that identity to an elementary school, to a middle school, to a high school, what those identities are, and want to make sure that people know that. The traditions that we have, whether it's Halloween parade, whether it's a senior project, whatever those things might be, will still take place. We will probably set a lot more, we'll have newer traditions, and newer things that, as a K-12 campus, that we'll, we'll find what we want to do, and we become more of a tradition here. And we've talked about the nurse, we've talked about the lunchroom, we've talked a little bit about administration, so really what I'm going to talk later on about this ad hoc committee, in bringing some educators together, to look at sort of the 30,000 for its view, we can't, we can't get too granular at this point. We'll have, if the bond is passed, from March to, we'll have 18 to 20 months, to really as, as an educational community, to dig into some of the more granular things. But the overall simple question, answer to the question is, yes, people have shared their concerns, I think at this point, people are excited about the proposal, but there's still a lot of questions educationally that we as educators need to answer. And some of those we may not get to until we get a successful vote in March.
Yeah, I mean, on the surface, it seems that the pros certainly outweigh the cons, but I guess just from my perspective, I'd be curious to know if there's anything that's perceived as a big stumbling block that we haven't thought about, as we're just, you know, focused on the, the design and the engineering and all those other, you know, how to build it, kind of things.
Again, I think that we've had some great conversations, and I don't think there's anything right now that, because we don't have answers to all the questions, but I don't think anyone's saying, no, this is, we're going the wrong direction. A lot of elementary folks have been really happy about being on one floor, easy access, a lot of the supports, the shared staff that was talked about at the last media, you'll see, just being in one place and not losing time, and spending more time with kids, and that's one of the things that came up, I think, a lot of the forums, is people really talking about the ability to spend more time with kids, to enrich our culture, to have much more mentoring, to have much more peer-to-peer or grade-to-grade sort of interventions.
Yeah, those are some of the feedback that I've heard just from community members, but even the, I guess in the last forum, I'm going to get out there, that what really resonated with them was how much time in a day kids are losing in terms of learning because of all of this, you know, up and down the hill, snow suits on, snow suits off, kind of stuff, yeah, I mean, I mean, that seemed to be a big aha.
I think, and I'd be remiss not to say, I think one of the pieces as educators, and I know as a superintendent, and I ensure my administration is the same, is the safety. We're taking a honey road building, we're putting that in 21st century, and this, all the safety aspects of that, whether it's being on one floor, one main entrance, much more controlled entranceway, our ability to continue to monitor as we do now, but more efficiently and effectively.
Yeah, this doesn't, this would address the long list of recommendations from, you know, Homeland Security and just general security with, you know, what goes on in the basement with the heating units around the little kids and that whole story that is, that is just unacceptable with them when it comes to broader safety in a changing world. Right now, we have, you know, the littlest and the modulators, and if there's a lockdown, they stay in there, they're out, there's the school, and then the three buildings, there's no good way to manage that, so it always seems to happen everywhere else, and we hope it never happens here, but this would have the flow, the cameras, all of that that's missing, and that's one of the advantages to the controlled entrance to that, so it's something I'm surprised hasn't come up more in the community, is although we're compliant, to be able to have kids in that, the difference in the just safety is significant to go, to going to this and having that advantage. But then when you look at the flow, so specifically the floor plan, does it, do you have questions about that, because they can help talk you through any of those? It's a really great, careful thought in the floor plan, and just to make sure everybody knows, the whole front end of this project is you do some heavy lifting with Vanwell leading the charge, and Russ working together, is you do the education plan, what do we offer, what do we need, where can we compromise, what do we need more of? That drives, those are the instructions for Vanwell to design the building, so the educators and the administration, and that was quite a process, and people put a lot of time into that and care, that's what drove, okay, this is what we need to give back, and that's where we've had the draft to get to this point. Anything specific? Can have them give an overview of that sample.
One of the things that I did enjoy listening to during the presentation was the back section, having rooms that are designed to be, during the presentation, they explain that if we have an off-year, where we go from a population of 25 kids into a classroom to 35, if you look at this, they have the ability where some of these classrooms are from 900 square feet versus 800 square feet, where we'll be able to handle those years of peaks, so I think that was a positive.
Yeah.
Which I liked in that design and in where it was in the building.
That's one of the big benefits, I think, to having it on one floor. Once you get to two floors, where you put the public classroom, you know, you want the little kids to be on the first floor, so.
It's very different, with the initial draft, we responded to what people had, and that has the up forum, but because of the lot, it forced the second floor, so no elevators, you can have stairwells, or degress, and all those other things. One of the things, it was okay to be personally opinionated in this discussion, I'm psyched about, is that the multipurpose room, the stage was expanded significantly, so you're talking about, you know, if you have 700 people at an elementary school concert, like the other night, you know, you could debate whether, what the, do you know what the head count would be? Did you have that?
I don't.
Like 400 or something like that?
Yeah.
So the Sherb is going to live on, and it needs to, because it was full the other night, it was awesome. But when it comes to a smaller scale, music, instead of being in the gym downhill, has proper music space with an elevated ceiling, practice room, and then it's right next to where the performance space is, where, so whether you're doing plays, or doing music, doing smaller concerts, that we can have enough, you know, take the whole audience in, it's going to be air-conditioned, the rest of the building is going to have the dehumidifier system, so it'll feel more air-conditioned, but the art, music, that's all going to have the proper space, it's kind of heart of the school, so I think that, that was a really neat.
So we're excited about the auditorium, this is actually a big gain from where we are now, for sure.
When you look at the practice space.
Huge game, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be a pretty amazing space, so then if it's going to be, you know, dodgeball in the morning, or it's raining, and they have recess inside, it's a quick turnover to have quality acoustics, the Sherb is great. It's a Indiana Hoosiers gym, and it's never going to be anything more than that, so kids did well, but everyone did well with the concert, this will be when you have music or choral, it'll be quality sound, and then the practice room is, is right there, just across the hallway. The, the special resources have proper space, individual space for reading and teaching, and that's separated by the hallway before you get to the pre-K, and that's been one of the things that I wanted to, if you didn't get questions about pre-K, Russ can talk through. Why we have to have it.
Jesse brought up a really good point, indoor recess, you know, now they have indoor recess, it's, it's in the classroom, you know, now they're going to have a place to be able to go, where there's some energy, you know, it's really, it's a huge improvement for the elementary school, for sure.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just observing the whole process and how the design has evolved over time, I think it's been really thoughtfully considered, I think we, not we, you guys have done, you guys have done a really good job just thinking about how to make modifications that help cost-wise to manage things, because I think one of the first, the earlier designs had an extension on the middle school, and you were able to somehow spare that and now bring it back into, so I was really pleased to see that that was always kind of at the forefront of that continuous evolution, to say, hey, if we tweak this a little bit, we can, you know, it does this, it's a better flow, and then it saves us, it saves costs, and all of those other things, so I, I think it was very thoughtfully considered, and I like watching the evolution.
I think it's worth mentioning that, that a lot of the improvements that you see from earlier versions.
I think it's worth mentioning that that a lot of the improvements that you see from earlier versions is about that feedback loop that we were able to have as part of the dialogue with the educators. So, some of these, uh, like the instrumental instruction room was added to the program because of the incorporation and the leveraging of the J C C middle school, it just made sense to that. The enlargement of the other stage platform, added storage room, called it storage. You know, all these, some of these big things and some of these little things come from that dialogue that came with some of the, uh, some of the education staff.
I think it's, I think it's neat too, how you clustered the library, computer lab, and the STEM is all kind of in one corner, so there could potentially be a lot more collaboration with that. And the way the design also flows is the classrooms really are segregated, I mean, it is three schools in one, but at the end of the day, the kids are spending most of their time, you know, in a totally separate area from the rest of this, which, you know, is gonna be shared at times, so.
And we try to, we try to create this this class house concept as best we can, you know, through the amount of resources we have. And then we try to break that down further as much as we can, not just as as inside space organization, but outside. So, you'll notice that, for instance, the pre-K first grade kindergarten classes are clustered around a playground that would be theirs. So, and how those rooms actually have doors that go directly into public ground, so that, again, giving that, pretty forcing that substitute.
Can you, I, maybe I'm just missing, can you explain to me how the cafeteria is gonna work with first graders and twelfth graders and?
I'd be happy to.
We were gonna bring that up, but you guys didn't.
So, we talked about this the other night, and and it is a great question and one that people have had concern about. And so, I'll I'll start, well, I started the other night, I went to the, our food service director and I said, so how are we gonna feed four hundred kids in the same amount of period of time that we have right now? Eleven o'clock to one o'clock, how are we gonna do that? And he looked at me and he said, we do that every day right now, so of course we can do it. The difference is being we're gonna have one cafeteria, so we can have four lunches as we have now, they're gonna run the same times, they're actually gonna run a little bit longer, they're twenty five minute lunches with a five minute passing time, and those fit into that time period of eleven to one o'clock. Well, probably, looking at again, there's some logistical things, we're probably looking at a K one, two, three, and then potentially a four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and then at eleven, twelve. As far as serving the lunch and things like that, we've heard, well, young kids take longer to do that. We are redesigning the serving area, so, um, I made reference to that, when you go to the scheme up now, you sort of walk into where the food serves, and you just pull what you want, and then you go and you check out. Right now, we all just sort of wait in line, and somebody puts something on our plate, we say yes or no. So, by changing that, um, that that sort of serving area, making that more scallop-like, um, it's gonna allow for a lot more flexibility. So, I don't have to wait in line if I'm just grabbing a milk, I can run in, grab my milk, get in line, cash out, and away I go. So, hopefully, we'll be able to actually give kids more time, especially little kids, more time than spending that time in line, but actually getting, getting the mail, getting what they want, and getting to a seat and incentive to eat.
And the kids are gonna have more choices.
They'll, they'll have a little bit more choices. And the table size, so one of the things I really looked at, the table size is the same size now as they are in our elementary school, as they are in our high school. So, they're the same bench kind of seating. Uh, we have to talk about how do we maybe, uh, enhance that a little bit, maybe for some of our little kids, whether that's in that rounded out section, that's now the senior section, if we look at some high tables, or maybe like a bar against the wall with some high stools or something, and trying to change that up. But we're, we're really looking at about ninety something kids per, 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 um, one center. And right now, we seat it, we could seat in that cafeteria as it is, about a hundred and twenty.
What about the other shared spaces, so you talked about like the height, the tables, you've already obviously considered that, but in the shared spaces, is there any of that same kind of concern, like with chair heights or whatever?
So, music and things, um, we have the two separate spaces now, so the idea there is if there was an elementary, um, music program going on currently right now, they sit on the floor. So, she has nice rugs and they kind of sit on the floor, and I assume some of that would continue to happen. When our kids that are in the, in the elementary music program, they sit on a, an adult chair, and they're playing, they're sitting on an adult chair, music stands and things like that.
So, the, um, the kitchen is really the only addition that we got it down to. And again, a lot of compromise that had planned had to be redone to pull those small additions back into the original, so I don't want the amount of compromise and hard work behind, you know, behind the scenes to get to this, to get, I wanted it to be recognized, but it was quite, quite an adventure for a lot of people to figure out how to do that. But the, getting the kitchen to be modernized and having that clean corridor, then going to a grab and go is gonna be fantastic, and it was one of the early considerations. It was, it was an animated meeting talking about what do you mean one cafeteria? So, this, this building has an old cafeteria, a kitchen that needs to be, that will benefit from being modernized, and then now we're fixing it with flow and everything else. So, that saves not having duplicate kitchens right nearby, so infrastructure on that. The boilers in this building are past, Honeywell told Andy and I at our first meeting together when we met, was these are past, I think it was three years past their reasonably usable life, you know, you gotta replace them. So, the new boilers and fixing the HVAC after all these years, in what's otherwise a wonderfully cared for and good condition building, the boilers are gonna feed the new elementary school next to it. So, part of the site constraints, a lot of the cost, a lot of efficiency, and coming with a plan that's right for Sonopie and our, and our school culture, by having those sort of shared resources and pooling things like the admin area. It, it gave room to separate the computer area that's now embedded in the library, which is also maker's space, we can actually have more of a STEAM STEM style elementary school. But those other compromises are also why we were able to come in under total cost with, um, compared to last year, which was just gutting the old building and putting an addition on and adding a road. That was quite a divisive topic, but needed to be done if we're gonna meet safety service, uh, needs. This is totally different value where you have all these other spaces, but the middle high school gets the, the work that's been talked about for a long time. The HVAC change is gonna be significant for comfort. I know we're jumping all around here, but has anybody looked at and what the process is for dealing with the elementary school? If this was to go in and we're done with it, is there a value to it? Does the school board have the authority to sell it? And if so, can that money be applied towards a principal? That's some of the other questions, I don't know if you have those answers already, um, it's valuable property in the little town. So, can I leave on this, just to start it first? So, we've been talking about this because we're getting more of those questions, which is great. So, the bond passes, one of the first discussions is gonna be, what do we wanna do in getting some consulting and advice on what we do with the elementary school? So, we have some parallels to Lebanon, where, um, there's the, the Vanwell Middle High School on the hill across from the town garage. They, they were able to sell some of their elementary schools for a fairly sizable sum, not, some communities sell them to a developer for a dollar. Uh, I'm hoping, or we've talked about it formally, is having some kind of citizen input to say, okay, it is a historic building, it's very different when you don't try to have children in it from an education standpoint. And get the forums, we, this is shaped by the forums, what if we get community feedback on some different ideas to see what other communities have done? So, we'll get to that, but it has to pass, 'cause we need this thing for two more, we need that to live along for two more years until we can open and have, um, all the kids over here. So, we'll still be needing to maintain it, but once the bond passes, we can start to talk about, and it would be great to get creative ideas from the community of.
That might be a separate subcommittee.
Right. So, the board, the new board, so the two, two of us are up for election, but when the new board forms, one of the first conversations after passes will be how we wanna tackle this as a board, and if we need other subcommittees. But I think that building.
But it's on us to tackle, it's not a town thing necessarily.
Nope, it's on us to figure it out.
It's on us.
Yep, and so we can have our consultants advise on what that looks like. There's some grim elements, there's some exciting elements, but it is, you know, there aren't a whole lot of buildings of that size that have potential for tax generation anywhere else in town. So, if we can do that, but the bond has to pass for us to tackle that.
We'd love to be able to say this is the impact and how it's gonna offset what we're gonna do, we just can't do that now, but it's something we will be committed to jumping into right away once it passes.
So, we have a plan, but the ideal is that it joins the tax rolls and the revenue can go to paying off the school, and it gets a second life, a second hundred years. But it, the balance, bond's gotta pass before we worry about it, 'cause like Russ had said, the timeline, we're looking at almost two years where we need to keep things going with that, and it's at the very end of its life. So, we have, that has its own challenges, uh, but it also, one, that we can, it has potential to be a really neat solution. Whether we get a lot of money out of it or not, has potential to be a really neat opportunity for the community.
It has potential to be a tax generator.
Yep.
Heard a lot of discussion about fundraising, um, I think Russ might be able to help us with this. Is it, did I understand correctly that if we were to go out and do, if this was the pass and we were to go out and apply for fundraising, the school board has the ability, if somebody wanted to donate two hundred thousand or two million to build the soccer and track, that that can be, you know, put in their name as a donation and different things like that?
So, you have a, a gifting and naming policy, which you would have to accept gifts as a, as a school board? You also have regulations regarding accepting those gifts and naming. I'll give you an example, I went to Springfield College Budweiser, wanted to put their logo on the top of the new gymnasium. And they said, geez, we really like your money, but, right? So, you have that ability to accept and reject gifts based upon what you feel is appropriate to be in your school. You, you, as a board, aren't going out and fundraising. Right, again, the, the PTO, um, the Booster Association, they may say, hey, we'd like to fundraise for a turf field in addition to, or somebody might say, hey, I'd like to offer X amount of dollars for this. And you can accept those gifts again, and you can make sure they live up to whatever standard is you'd like to apply.
Yeah, so, so donations are wonderful, but we as a board aren't gonna go ask for them, but others do. Like the, you know, Veterans Field is trying to raise money, and that is part of our solution, it's related, it's a town project, but our being able to practice on that. So, if, you know, that, that could be something if a group wants to see, okay, this now plugs in, I would think for them, I haven't talked to them, but they would be excited to see this really plugs into a bigger solution for the whole town. So, something on those lines, but we just need to, I think it's great we're talking about it as a board, but we don't go and do that fundraising, certainly welcome. But there's, you know, looking at other communities, you know, benches, you look at the, um, the covered bridge has all those names on the bricks, there's all kinds of things we could do, or people could, you know, it's great, the two million sounds great. And hopefully, there's a whole line of people that are excited about two million, but realistically, if somebody can buy a brick and put their fingerprint on it, and we sell a whole bunch of bricks, it's that much more that goes towards that. And it's also more the feeling of, you know, community drive or whatever. So, we'll figure all that out. We have to kind of, that part of it, we would be responsible for kind of guiding, or if there is a subcommittee, which would be ideal, on the specific things in the building for potential naming, but we have to be compliant with bond and those other factors. And no Budweiser on the roof kind of approaches, so, um, we'll get to that, so. But it, some communities have done, like we went to the playoffs, you know, you went up the stairs and you saw sponsored by the hardware store and stuff like that. So, that's up, so, neat, good potential. What else? If you, if you don't, you're on the spot here, one thing that I've been getting asked a lot from people who are, say they're supportive, but they're just trying to get their hands around what this means and, you know, what is, what the outlook is. Question I've been getting quite a bit since the forum is what happens if it doesn't pass? So, I don't know if you wanna share a little bit on, Andy and I can share what we know, but.
Sure, I, I, I think from a perspective of what happened, what happens if it doesn't pass, is the board conversation regarding the next step. Um, one of the things that you folks have asked me to do is take a look at, um, if we were to close the elementary school and and make this, uh, this school here a K eight or a pre-eight, a pre, pre-K eight, um, what would that look like? What would our budget look like, and then we're sending our, our high school kids off to choice? And so, I, I ran through the, those numbers, and if we take the state average, the, which is on the Department of Education website, the cost per pupil state average, the seventeen eighteen, which is sixteen thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. And we took, take that, our number of high school students right now is a hundred and fifty-five. The special ed, you double that, so I, I just used a hundred and sixty-five students for the math, if you're doing it at home. If you just take that hundred and sixty-five children and you put that against the sixteen, sixteen thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars, that's a two point six million dollar tuition bill you'll have every year. Now, unfortunately, by not having a high school, um, and if we're going sort of a, a, I, I had us going a choice model and not, um, an area agreement where all our kids are being accepted, but more of a choice model, 'cause I've heard that sort of talked about here in this community and other schools are doing it. We would have to do, potentially do something with some of our special education students, not all of those students may be able to pick up a choice school. So, I put an additional five hundred thousand dollars into that two million dollar number, and I also added seventy five thousand dollars for transportation. If we did have an anchor school, say that was Kirshat, and we had to bring kids over there from Sonopie, I would imagine we would sort of have regional stops, whether that was at the gym or it was in the harbor, and kids met there and then we took them there, it wasn't a door to door service. So, to tuition our students, uh, or to choice our student out, out would be about three point two million dollars. And that's again using our state average cost per pupil. Folks know that our current cost per pupil is much higher than the state average, so I just use the state average. And so, then I went through the, the budget, and I looked at operation costs for the elementary school, um, and I looked at, uh, pulling out sort of numbers of what the high school impact is to our budget. Uh, our proposed budget right now is twelve million six hundred and twenty-two dollars. A K eight budget, based upon this year's budget, is about, uh, nine million seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, you put the nine million seven with the three point two, and it's about thirteen million dollars, which is more than our currently proposed budget that we do right now, pre-K through twelve, in Sonopie.
Yeah, I think that's helpful to, certainly insightful for us to, to hear that when we're working on it, you know, sharing your progress with the subcommittee. But one of the things that can just be incredibly blunt, trying to talk about the facts of the safety concerns, trying to absorb different potential ideas from the community. We have to, as a board, be factual, so if we have a personal opinion, we can say, my personal opinion is, but this is one of those ones where, um, when we do focus on the pages of safety shortcomings, then people will say, well, it's a scare tactic. Well, we're, I'm sorry if it's coming across that way, I certainly don't hear that when you talk about them, but there's pages of safety problems, there's, there is issues. And when it talks to, when we talk about, um, the school choice and all of that, for some families, that might be a great fit, but when it comes to the taxpayers, it's gonna cost more, it's helpful to, to illustrate. And the other factor is with consultants giving some insight, what it would take to convert this building, there's very different space needs and uses, there'd be a significant investment, multimillion dollar investment to get this building to become a K eight. So, we have to just talk about those things and share those facts, however people choose to interpret them. I just wanna reinforce that this is what boards do, and this is the predicament we're in by putting this off for thirty years.
Yes, and I'm sure Brad can talk a little bit more about the conversion cost, but don't forget that this still needs some infrastructure work. So, I mean, no matter what, you're looking at a bond vote, um, for millions, not, not a few hundred thousand dollars, and then we're looking at an increased budget every year, um, to send our kids away, so.
Right, so it's, the next board, if it doesn't pass, is gonna have, the first conversation's gonna be an interesting and intense one, because it's, we're down to, do we keep the old building going? Which is maybe, we know is gonna be at a minimum multiple millions of dollars, do we can change this all around and then have tuition, which is higher? So, we've really, over thirty years, gotten ourselves in quite a predicament, and we have to be the stewards of trying to figure out whatever that best path is the community will support. But then, we're not getting out of a multimillion dollar bond, is what I've learned over the last two and a half years. At some point in our next couple of years, we're gonna have to, to be able to keep, either keep that open, do this, do this forward looking project, or, uh, the other compromise. So, I just think, I don't know, if I'm supposed to speak this bluntly as, you know, in a board setting, but this is what we're facing, and we're trying to convey that in the most responsible way, so hopefully that's coming across.
Okay, that's Russ, one more question, if I wanna take that. Where do you come up with the, the sixteen thousand dollars per pupil? And the reason why I bring that up is I feel like when we shared the SAU with Newport, because we are, as some people say, a tax rich town, I felt the reason we left was because when we were in Newport. because we are, as some people say, a tax-rich town, I felt the reason we left was because when we were in Newport, we were paying a higher price to be in SAU and getting less for our money. So what keeps other schools from, how do they control what you charge per pupil? Is there a state mandated rate or they can say, Sonopie's got it, so not 16, but we're gonna charge you 22 million a kid?
Right, so, so kind of two separate things to some degree. You had SAU services that you were being charged more for based upon the formula of the structure of the SAU. And that was a bad deal and you did a good thing by getting out of it. Cost per pupil is set for, for every district in the state by, by, by the state where we report our numbers. They look at our number of teachers, they look at our expenses, our special ed costs, and then they come up and they say, here's your cost per pupil. There's a formula. So we can't, now, we have a cost per pupil of about 23,000, 22,000. We don't charge that for tuition. So the difference now between cost per pupil and tuition. So our cost, the cost per pupil that I took was the average cost per pupil in the state that is currently on the Department of Education website. So that's all the districts in the state, that's the average. Kearsage, I can tell you the cost per pupil is $17,000 and up. Whether they would say, hey, we would let your kids come here for the 16, or they would say, no, we're gonna charge you the 17. And one of the reasons why Sonopie chose to go with a lower cost per pupil is to make sure that children from other communities that have choice could come here without having a lot of out-of-pocket expense for parents. So right now, I think some of our parents maybe pay up to 500, 800, maybe out of pocket. Some don't pay at all because those, those communities cover that full price. But I believe there are, there are a couple that do pay, you know, 4, 5, 600 to have a little skin in the game.
So there's no control for us if we were to bust our kids out? Those could choose.
They've set a tuition rate, tuition price and we pay that tuition price.
And once you go that way, coming back is not gonna happen like I see other towns in the Kearsage District, still complaining, saying, we wish we'd never left.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So again, there's a tuition rate and if, we're gonna use Kearsage for the example. A Kearsage would potentially be our anchor school, so you have to have an anchor school so that kids get to go somewhere. Our kids that want choice, they could go to Newport, Claymont, they could go down to Hopkinton and go to Concord. And whatever that tuition cost was, that's what it is. If we only gave 16 and Hopkinton was 21 and Hopkinton says, we're charging 21, the parent's gonna have to make up that difference. So we're gonna pay our 16 and the parent's gonna pay an additional five on top of that to get that child into Hopkinton. If, if Kearsage at 17 is our anchor school and we're only giving 16, every parent in our anchor school now has, would have to pay that additional $1,000 to get them into Kearsage. So not only are we, we lose control completely of our high school, we lose control of how that money gets put upon us, but we then continue to tax our parents for additional places that they potentially wanna put their children and get educated. With no control.
So have you looked or ran any numbers kind of in the opposite direction? We, obviously with our classroom sizes now, they're big enough that they warrant two classes per grade, but they're not at capacity. So if school choice passes, it's probably a reasonable assumption that our enrollment would increase given that we're pretty highly ranked in the state?
Sure.
So without, you know, obviously assuming we get max enrollment and we had some capacity, what does that start to look like in a favorable position for us?
And so that, that question came up about what are we building the school for? And the, the end of that conversation was about 100 more kids could fit. Now, I can't put 100 more kids in any one particular grade obviously, and so they would have to be dispersed equally across our, our 13 grade levels. So just do the, the simple math, so it's 100 kids at $13,000, $14,000 a kid. It's a nice piece of change to, to offset your principal and interest payment and potentially pay your bond off quicker if you're going through a bank instead of a bond bank. So yes, those opportunities are definitely there for us to be a benefactor of not only having more room, but if choice does come to fruition. Not to mention the Freudian and the, and the, and the Goshens, our communities have that choice option in place now. Well, we pick up, in the last three years, four years, we picked up anywhere from 25 to 31 children coming out of choice and get that excess revenue. And we went through that in the budget process.
Yeah.
If school choice passes, are we forced to take every kid that wants to come here? No.
Yeah. Now, you can, you can, at the rate, the way our policies are, now we're not forced to take every child that asks. We have a process.
We maintain pretty strong control of that.
We maintain really good, good control over that. Our principals, actually, it, it doesn't ever get to my level, it doesn't get to the board level, it's made through the principals and they have a committee that make those decisions based upon the needs of, the needs of our school, our numbers, the tipping point, our classroom, but then also the expectations of those children coming in to meet our expectations, behavioral, academically, you know, socially.
So now that's gonna change if they, law changes for school from the.
Yeah, we, we have a policy in place.
So the driver of the project also and the scope and scale is that it's not fueled the dreams by any stretch. It's great, we could absorb, we could have, choose to absorb 100 tuition students, which is fantastic for paying things off. But when you look at NezDak that we have to go by, those numbers came out again and they're again showing up to 20, 29, that we're steady as we, steady as we go and the projections are consistent, maybe slightly higher. But that's also a driver of where the head plan was done and the scope of the subcommittee is that, great if we can have more kids, but not too many because we have something that's really working on, on this scale and has an advantage. But then we can't absorb them and it's, it's the only revenue that we're producing.
Just kinda, I wanna be really clear because I think this is important. We did not design the school with the intent of taking an additional 100 children.
That's what I was trying to say, so thank you. Yeah, this is for our population.
This was designed for our population. And again, we talked about the educational plan pushing the design, proper square footage and those things. So when it's not said, hey, we're building this building because we're gonna take in 100 kids, right? We may have that ability during the course of the, the, the generations of this building being in place if it passes, but that's not the purpose of putting this building to where it is right now, square foot wise or any other way.
Well, I would hate to build it for what we have now and then 10 years from now find out you have 50 more residents that we have to take care of and not have a place to put them.
Right, well, you look at, you look at the K-12 impact, something, if you're not directly tied to the school, you look at the workforce development, the effect on the economy. And we had a funny example, I realized last night, that if you ski, not everybody skis, but if you ski and go to Mount Sonopie, I think there's about 80% chance one of our students is gonna be the one scanning you to let you go on the hill. They, you know, all businesses are struggling hiring. We, I remember how many openings we have at Hypotherm. I know all local businesses are struggling. It used to be, you know, paper, help wanted signs, they came down. Now they're permanent fixtures. Young people, so we're in a unique position where we have, gonna, we have, projected to stay steady or slightly higher. But you look at the, you know, Dale has all kinds of openings, they're struggling. It's a good employer, it's a great company and they're struggling to fill those positions. I was realizing, oh, we're directly affecting with the workforce because several 14-year-olds have their first jobs and their fancy helly handsome gear that's been provided, but we have, I don't know how many now, but a bunch more got hired and we have all these kids from, or students from here that are helping a local business be viable. So it's a huge advantage if we can sustain attracting young families. The whole housing pinch is a downfall. We'd have more families if housing was a little more accessible and there's, you know, lines of folks that wanna come in. That's driven by the school, the elementary school in particular, going up towards the high school. But it's amazing to see just with this community, how much the students here as employees are affecting local businesses and relied on.
Well, I think the economic impact is a lot bigger than that, to be honest. I mean, I assume.
I just gave you, I gave you one prompt. You run with it.
Well, I was gonna say, but the school, I assume is probably the biggest employer in town.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah.
So that, that's goes, I mean, that feeds for itself.
Most of the employees live there.
Correct, so you, you lose, you lose employees, you're now gonna impact your real estate values. Your valuations on your properties are likely going to decrease, which is a negative impact to the community. Most of what goes on in this community centers around the school, that's a pretty big loss. So I think there's a whole lot of, there's a whole host of other things if you wanna start going down that road of what you need to think about in the bigger.